Good morning, everyone. The hour of 10 o'clock having arrived about 19 minutes ago because of the Finance Committee's robust discussion, I call a meeting of October 27th, 2020 to order. May I ask, Member Shawn Noonan, would you be kind enough to lead us in Pledge of Allegiance? And then, everyone, please remain standing, and I will introduce our invocator. Shawn Noonan.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So Father George Guinness is unable to be here today, and I welcome back Reverend Andrew Hogan, the chaplain from the DuPage Care Center, to lead us in invocation. Chaplain Hogan.
Good morning. Let us pray. Almighty and eternal God, as we come before you, focus our minds and hearts upon your will. Remove the many distractions that dissipate our energy. Remind us of our special purpose, gathered together in your name, to be stewards and servants. Come to us and be with us. Enter our heart, mind, and spirit. Guide us what we are to do and where we ought to tend. Show us what we must accomplish in order that, with your help, we may be able to please you in all things. May you alone be the author of our decisions. Grant us wisdom to lead others in these challenging times. May we be a source of comfort and calm for those who are afraid and anxious. Grant us balance in perspective and strengthen our resolve to work together to serve our county residents, especially the most in need. Grant healing to those affected by this virus, especially the care center residents. Inspire human minds to merge creativity and science to develop a cure. Grant safety to those workers who tend to, in any capacity, the sick and afflicted. Protect them and their loved ones. Continue to bless the work that we do in your name. Continue to bless all the employees and departments of DuPage County. Bless the leadership of the county board and the precious residents of the care center. May we continue to be good stewards of this region and its resources. Unite us to your will as we serve you and the people of DuPage County. We ask all these things in your name as you live and reign forever and ever. Amen.
Thank you, Reverend. Mr. Deputy Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Wendy, I don't see the Zoom link. Could you send that to me as well? Thank you. Pardon me? The Zoom link for the meeting. But I can still read the roll. Chaplain?
Here.
Covert?
Here.
DeSart?
Here.
DeCiani?
Here.
Eckoff? Elliott?
Here.
Hart? Healy? Krajewski? Larson? Noonan? Ozog?
Here.
Bacalski? Bacalski? Renahan?
Here.
Rutledge? Selman?
Here.
Tornatori? Nze?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Clerk. So I, uh, we have nine members present. So we do not have a quorum present, so therefore pursuant to the Governor's Executive Order and Illinois state law, under Section 7E, I think it is, we're going to have to take roll calls on, um, on everything like we've done in the past. So. Yes, sir, please.
In our rules, it does state the chairman is a member of any committee for a purpose of quorum. Would that also be for county board?
I kind of thought that myself, but our legal counsel here has ruled. Uh, it's, it's, the county board is not a committee. It's a entity created under the, uh, the county's code. So our rules wouldn't apply upward, only downward.
You gotta give me an A for effort. Thanks.
Yes, it's a very conservative reading of the statute, and it's what we approve for, I, I think, generally speaking. So with that, we move on to the Order of Business entitled Chairman's Report. Uh, I have a couple of presentations here today. Uh, first and foremost, we begin our chairman's report with a proclamation of appreciation for Hope's Garden, which provides fresh produce for families in need. This proclamation was requested by Member Elizabeth Chaplin. After I read it, I will ask her and Michael Berry, who's here. I spoke with him moments ago, and our sheriff to say a few words. So proclamation goes as follows. Whereas part of DuPage County's mission is to provide for the health, safety, and well-being of our residents, and whereas four years ago, the DuPage County Sheriff's Office created Hope's Garden to provide locally grown, fresh food to families in need and support health equity efforts by providing access to healthy food. And whereas the recent relocation of the garden to the DuPage County Jail created a vital tool to support mental health and addiction therapy and allows the inmates to learn a valuable skill and enjoy the labor of growing your own food. And, excuse me, whereas, the garden provides life-changing opportunities to both residents and inmates. And DuPage County finds Hope's Garden to be a valuable community resource. And whereas several local organizations have been instrumental in the success of this garden, including the DuPage County Sheriff's Office, Just of DuPage, Cantini Park, Scares, Prosex Greenhouse in Winfield, the McCormick Foundation, the DuPage County Public Works Department, and the DuPage County Division of Transportation. And whereas the contributions of the above-named organizations were vital to the creation and success of Hope's Garden, now therefore be it resolved that I, Daniel J. Cronin, Chairman of the DuPage County Board and members of the board, do hereby commend and thank these organizations for developing a valuable resource to DuPage County. I'll entertain a motion. Second it. All those in favor say aye. Pose nay. The ayes have it. Approved this 27th day of October, 2020. And with that, I'll turn it over to, uh, to Member Chaplin. And then I do have Sheriff Mendrick here, as well as Mr. Berry, Berry from Just DuPage. So, Member Chaplin.
Thank you, Chairman. So, um, back in February of 2019, a group of individuals gathered in the Sheriff's, in Sheriff Mendrick's office to discuss how the Sheriff's Office and Just of DuPage could help with environmental needs in the county. The, the group met several times in 2019, and the meetings were productive, and we had really great discussions, and many wonderful ideas were brought forward. One of those ideas was a community garden at the jail. Um, the Environmental Committee has been trying to promote gardening, so I was extremely pleased that the group was not only open to, um, a garden, but was really excited about it. So this past March, right before COVID, we had a meeting about. So COVID came along, and I really didn't think the project was going to move forward, but Sheriff Mendrick was determined, and everybody else on the team was as well. So at one point, it was decided that Hope's Garden would find a new home at the jail. Uh, the enthusiasm and support for the garden from the community was really amazing. Um, and I think that's the whole, that's the real story here. The community members had stepped up to make the garden possible. You know, you don't see a lot of people, I mean, we have so many good people that want to just do the right thing and help. So we had a few Zoom meetings, and, um, we had Master Gardeners, um, Scott Witt, Matt LaFond, and Lou Marisco from Cantini and McCormick Foundation, Kathy Palazie, Palazie from, uh, made generous donations from Prozac, and Kay, um, and her crew from Scares were involved every step of the way. We talked, you know, it's, it's a project. We had to talk about logistics of the garden, what materials would be used, what vegetables, what flowers, what would be planted. And it was, it was really inspiring to see the members of the community step up and volunteer their time to, to do this. You know, it wouldn't be possible. Um, DuPage DOT came in and, um, made a beautiful sign for the garden. Public Works helped with, like, moving spigots and a few other things on the, um, on the property over there. And Deputy Ralph Colassa, Mike Berry, and Michelle Manino with Just of DuPage, they're just the soul of that garden. Um, you know, but it really wouldn't have, um, come to fruition really without Sheriff Mendrick's, uh, support. So I understand that in the first year of the garden, um, it's produced thousands of pounds of produce for the community. And as you mentioned in the proclamation, research, research shows that there are so many benefits that gardens can create for incarcerated, such as reduced recidivism rates among participants in the prison gardening system or program, lower rates of depression, and improved mental health and cost savings. So I just want to thank everybody for their enthusiasm, help, and support of Hope's Garden, and it was really an honor to be part of this project.
Okay, thank you, Member Chaplin. Sheriff Mendrick, would you like to say a few words, please?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate it. And I want to especially thank Member Chaplin for all of her help. This wouldn't have been possible without all of these groups coming together and working on this together. Uh, this shows what cohesion, uh, and real community work can do and what, what can be produced at the end. Uh, I want to say especially thanks to Just of DuPage also, but particularly Mike Berry. Uh, about two years ago, when I started, we sat down and talked about what his vision of a rehabilitation program would be in a correctional facility. And to be honest with you, I thought it was kind of pie in the sky. I'm like, can this guy really do this? I mean, uh, it turns out he can. He, he's been the architect of all of our vocational, uh, training. Uh, not only does he, uh, build these systems, but he finds the funding sources for them. I mean, there, there's the uniqueness in that right there is where we haven't had to come to the county to ask for money for any of this stuff, um, because Mike has not only worked the project, but he found the backend with a revenue source, usually through grants. So we've done welding, certified welders. Uh, we are going to graduate our, I believe, is it our ninth class? Our ninth janitorial sanitation services class today. Uh, we graduated our first female sanitation services class last week. Um, we have also done now the horticulture. Uh, Mike is working on some new ones. We may be looking at painting and drywall soon. Uh, these are just great services. Uh, oh, also, I forgot, uh, Mike has also been spearheading what we call a reentry program, to where we're reaching beyond the confines of the correctional facility and making sure the home, the destination environment for the people coming out of corrections is going to be one that does not promulgate the same old routine over and over. We don't want people falling back into alcoholism, uh, taking drugs, not going to their anger management classes, not going to the job. Uh, another thing Mike did, he helped orchestrate suits for success, to where if people are going to video bond court, they're given a suit, so they're not in an orange jumpsuit with that stigma of inmate. And if they go through our vocational services, uh, when they leave, uh, the correctional setting, they're given three suits, so when they go to job interviews, they, they look the part. So that, that increases success rates. Um, it, it builds confidence, and it actually changes human beings from, uh, you know, a tax burden to a taxpayer. And Mike Berry is the architect of all this. So I'd like to introduce Mike, please.
Thank you, Sheriff Mendrick. Board members, on, on behalf of my staff and the inmates that we've been able to, to work with, I want to, um, I want to thank him for allowing us the opportunity to add one more program. Uh, the garden was such an important thing. Some of the inmates have been in it, have not seen sunlight for nine, 10, 11 months sometimes. Uh, we bring them out to the garden. We bring counselors out with them, as well as they have, obviously, deputies that, that help out and, uh, helping with the security and, and all the other issues that came along with that. Doing anything in a community is hard enough. Doing it inside of a jail can be very challenging. But, uh, but with the sheriff's, uh, cooperation, we've been able to, to start a lot of different programs and bring other members of the community in. And we are planning on expanding our trade training, expanding the garden next year to even more, um, uh, surface area. And, um, we're looking forward to expanding our rehabilitation programs within the jail and within the community itself. So on behalf of my staff and the inmates, I'd like to thank you for this recognition. I very much appreciate it.
Well, thank you, Michael Berry, for your good work. Thank you, and God bless you. Oh, Member Rutledge?
Thank you, Chairman. I just wanted to commend Louz and Sheriff Mendrick and Mike Berry for this program. I'm a huge advocate, uh, uh, well, I'm a huge gardener. Um, so whenever I have a bad day, I go dig and I pull weeds, and my son laughingly calls that rage gardening. But it does wonders to cleanse my spirit and make me smile again. And the only reason I wanted to comment this morning is as an 11-year volunteer, a denata equestrian, I know of a free local source for manure to amend those gardens for next year, which is a great thing to do right now. So, um, denata equestrian, if you need to amend your, your flower beds. Thank you.
Yeah, very good.
There it is.
No, I agree. The gardening is very therapeutic. Anyone else seeking recognition? Seeing none, hearing none? I move on to the next item on Chairman's Report, and that is, uh, I see our favorite, uh, executive director of the Health Department of every and any health department in the state of Illinois. Karen Ayala has joined us this morning, um, of our DuPage County Health Department. As you know, she has been leading the effort in, um, in a remarkably effective way. Um, Karen Ayala is known far and wide across the state of Illinois, is a no-nonsense, very smart, very capable. Um, she's got exercises, uh, great leadership, and we're so fortunate to have us, she, have her. And, uh, she's joining us for her annual budget presentation to provide some of the latest information on COVID-19 response mitigation efforts in the region. So Karen, please, um, please begin with your presentation, and we will take some questions, uh, on the budget first before we just discuss COVID response. So let's let Karen get through her presentation, and then we'll open it up to questions about the budget first and COVID second, if we may, please. With that, please proceed. Karen Ayala.
Okay, thank you very much, and thank you for the opportunity to provide these, um, two extremely important updates. First of all, for those of you in the room, you have, um, examples of the safety kits that have been produced, um, and distributed across the, the DuPage County. As part of our CARES Act dollar, uh, allocation, we have ordered and purchased 15,000 units, um, most of them adults, but some of them youth. In Phase 1, we have been working with communities highly impacted by COVID. Um, the work group was developed by DuPage majors and managers to increase outreach and communication efforts to slow the spread of COVID, particularly in hard-to-reach populations. The specific focus is on low-income, high-density, multi-unit housing complexes where, uh, high concentration of Latinx and essential workers reside. Our work group members include, communities include Addison, Bensonville, Glendale Heights, and West Chicago. And so far, um, over, let me add this quick, over 5,000, 6,000, um, no, 8,000 kits have been distributed through those communities. So we wanted to provide you with an example of how this money is being, um, both, uh, allocated and then distributed into our communities. Uh, so helping me drive the presentation today is one of the phenomenal, um, partners that I have the opportunity to work with at the DuPage County Health Department. Chris Hoff has served as our incident commander. Um, on the Zoom with us are Dr. Rashmi Chug and Adam Forker, who have also been instrumental in our efforts. So, next slide, please. What I'd like to do today is provide, um, updates on COVID, the COVID status within our community, the work that we have done, and then discuss with you our budget for the upcoming year. Um, two areas have gotten the most, um, attention over the past several weeks, so I thought we would start there. First of all is the, the issue of schools. And so you will see on this graph, that, that the number of cases, um, on the right side of that inset, um, have, have pretty much eclipsed our earlier wave of COVID within the community in every, um, from every age group. But when we talk about schools, based upon the school framework that the Health Department developed at the request of DuPage County superintendents and alongside the Regional Office of Education, and if we could pull that up, Chris, we recently moved into the substantial range of community, uh, transmission on Monday, October 19th. This was the result of the large number of cases per 100,000 that are now circulating in our community. This framework uses guidance from across the United States and provides at least five metrics by which we assess our, our, um, community transmission on a weekly basis. Clearly, s- school superintendents need to consider multiple factors when making this critical decision. And, and the Health Department both acknowledges and supports their individual authority to make those decisions outside of the framework. However, they had asked us for, for, uh, public health recommendations, and so that was provided to them. Next slides, please. When we talk about community mitigation and resurgence criteria, clearly, the, the increase in cases and community spread impacts other areas other than schools. And on October 20th, the governor announced that Region 8, made up of Kane and DuPage County, had met the resurgence criteria that required additional mitigation strategies to be imposed. Per the governor's plan, we are now in Tier 1 mitigation for at least two weeks and until the positivity rate across our, our region decreases under 6.5%. The mitigation strategies primarily target restaurants and bars. However, it's very important to, to identify that indoor and closed spaces, whether they be restaurants and bars or our own living rooms, where people outside of your household aren't masked, are eating and drinking, talking loudly for extended periods of time, pose the most risk and the, the opportunity for spread. One of the, the, uh, questions that resulted is the issue of outbreaks when we started talking about mitigation. So I'd like to keep, clarify the outbreak data listed on our website. And if we could pull up that chart. This is information that, for those of you who use our dashboard on a daily basis, if you scroll down underneath that dashboard, these are static, um, graphs that are updated on a weekly basis. First of all, what you'll see is that outbreak-associated cases represent only a small fraction of overall cases. We have, or yesterday, we had about 3,300 in that, um, that chart. Yes, 32, 35 cases, um, in that outbreak chart. And clearly, we've had over 22,000 cases identified across our community. Underneath that chart is a chart that outlines the outbreaks that we have identified over the last two weeks. You will see that only 52 cases are reflected in that chart, which means that we were only able to identify, um, uh, shared sources of contact and spread in, for 52 individuals. That does not represent the total sum of all the cases. What that represents is the work that our contact tracers and case investigators have been able to, um, extract, not extract, but, but to get from, from individuals who they're talking to, who test positive. Increasingly, we're finding people less willing to talk with us about where they've been in the days prior to their, their either onset of symptoms or their positive case. And so that is one area that I am asking for your support in. This does not reflect, it is not accurate to say that, 48% of COVID cases over the last two weeks were the result of, or emanated from long-term care facilities. You follow me? What that 48% indicates is that of the cases linked to an outbreak, which is a much smaller number, 48 emanated from a long-term care facility. That's vastly different than how some of this information has been communicated recently. And so I, I hope that that makes sense and, and that you're able to, um, articulate that when you have questions. Back to the slides. Um, as, as I've discussed, uh, previously, our business resource team is continuing to work with businesses, including bars and restaurants, since the start of the pandemic. In response to the mitigation order, we sent informational letters to all 4,000 food-serving establishments, informing them of the governor's decision. Next, when we receive a complaint, we reinforce that information by reaching out to the business owner and notifying them of the potential legal and public health outcomes. We then rely upon our case investigation information to identify businesses with confirmed spread of the virus to take further action. Next slide, please. Um, one of the important resources that was, um, included in the governor's announcement is the additional support prioritized for businesses who are under mitigation order. So this is now, um, funding that was available to any Illinois business, but DuPage County business owners will have priority to this information. We have, we have also very much appreciated the county board's support, um, as well as a number of other resources that have been collated and shared through our, the partnership with Choose DuPage. And we very much appreciate the opportunity to work with them. Now clearly, this is a new and painful chapter in our experience with COVID. So I'd like to really use this time. I'm going to grab a bottle of water.
Take your time. It's hard to drink through the mask, though.
To highlight five important messages that we would appreciate your assistance in sharing and amplifying. First, why are we seeing such an increase in cases? The very simple and straightforward answer to that is because not enough people are doing and taking the necessary preventive steps that we need them to do. This virus only needs a small window of opportunity to spread. Secondly, I'd like to acknowledge that there is lots of interest and, and, and challenges as we seek to understand the data around COVID-19. So what I'd like to do is really, um, focus you on a key data point that has recently been, um, recently been published, that COVID-19 is now the third-leading cause of death in the U.S. It falls behind heart disease and cancer. And now, how many of us have lost someone to cancer? And if we had the opportunity to save that individual by wearing a mask, we would do so in a heartbeat. Third, although we are confounded by this virus spread, we know what works. We know that masking works. We know that physically distancing works, and we know that washing our hands work. And for as many businesses, including restaurants and bars, that have taken this very seriously and really acknowledged the risk, not only to their customers, but to their employees, there are businesses that have done nothing. And so we must continue to, to address those areas. Fourth issue is we only have more, uh, more cases because we're doing more testing. No, we have more cases because we have more cases. If, in fact, we were doing the same number of testing and there wasn't disease spread throughout our community, we wouldn't be at the 8% threshold that we find ourselves above right now. And finally, and once again, outbreaks represent a very small fraction of the overall cases. And so, uh, making, making wide-sweeping, um, And so, uh, making, making wide sweeping, um, uh, conclusions based upon that information will not be accurate. That's a little bit about where we're at. Let me talk about what we've been up to. Health Equity and Access Response Team is what we've, we've, um, named our, um, health equity efforts around COVID. The acronym, of course, is the Catchy Heart. We formed this the summer of 2020 in partnership and with, uh, with the leadership of the DuPage Health Coalition and the DuPage Federation. One of the priorities in our response was addressing the racial and ethnic disparities illuminated by COVID. And we will, we have developed both not only the need but also the goal of this group. I would like to use this as an opportunity to invite you to participate in the upcoming virtual meeting, which is Friday. If you're interested, please let me know. We've also continued to provide technical assistance to our businesses. You can see that the number of businesses, um, assisted to date continues to climb. We have a team that, um, addresses calls as they come in, emails as they come in, complaints as they come in, um, and they average about 62 contacts per day. Next, the issue of schools. We continue to walk side by side with our school leaders and, um, and, uh, the increase, the, the increased challenges to schools has resulted in increased, um, contact with us as we all work to wade through the, the updated guidance. We start with, with one set of guidance from IDPH and CDC, and we find ourselves, as we learn more about the disease, making, um, updates to that. Even prior to, um, to coming into this meeting, our community-based testing site, which has expanded, um, its, its capacity up to 600, um, was closed because we had reached that capacity. People are, are, um, very interested in being tested right now, and we appreciate that, both in terms of being able to monitor the disease activity, but also, if you are positive and if you are at high risk, it's very important that you access the therapeutic treatment. FDA just approved remdesivir last week, but that only works if you get it in the first couple days of your infection. So early detection is a key. We have now, um, performed over 35,000 tests. If you go all the way back to when we started on, in June, our average positivity rate is, what, is 4.5%. However, concern, concerningly, you'll see that over the last seven days, our rolling positivity rate is 9.7%. So we are in fact seeing that increase. This effort would not be possible without the additional staff that we've been able to bring on, um, through our CARES Act investment, as well as the partnership with OSUM and the Traffic Volunteer, the Volunteers for Traffic. Finally, our case investigation and contact tracing program. We have closed 21, over 21,000 cases, which is, um, calculates to about 96% of the cases identified as of October 23rd. We have about 170 staff who average six contacts a day, and we are able to close about 400 cases a day. That effort, however, um, has, has need, needed to be really supplemented and supported, um, through our educational campaign, which is the next slide. The Stay Safe and Answer the Call campaigns are awareness campaigns designed to educate and inform residents about the steps they can take to, to slow the spread of COVID-19. The Answer the Call campaign is designed to not only answer your phone, but please answer the questions that our case investigators and contact tracers ask you about where you've been. It is not a matter that we want to insert ourselves in your life, but what, what will help us be more strategic in our response to this disease is if we have the data and information. Otherwise, we're left with these widespread blanket kind of policies that, um, that impact everyone. We also have been doing multimedia advertising. Our digital and social media campaigns have combined, combined have served over 11.4 million impressions since the middle of August. They've generated almost 40,000 visits to our website. Our short-form videos have been viewed by 200, almost 200,000 times in their entirety with an amazing 92% video completion rate. Our breakthrough advertising, and this is, uh, stuff that isn't targeted toward the 60-plus amongst us, but on Snapchat has, has engaged more than 30,000 users with a mask lens filter designed to reduce the stigma around wearing a mask in the younger populations. These filters have generated more than 280,000 impressions and have been shared 12,000 times since they were la, launched October 1st. Many of you have seen our commercials on Comcast, AT&amp;T, Wow!, and Connected TV this week, and we will continue, um, to focus on wearing a mask, watching your distance, washing your hands. And the next focus will really be on the personal stories of those impacted by, uh, COVID and celebrating the hos, uh, holidays safely. Next couple of slides are, um, examples of the advertising. We've recently, um, launched TV commercials, digital, um, billboards, as well as, um, educational elements at gas stations and, and laundromats. Next slide is a couple of our digital and social, social media campaigns that have been rolled out. And finally, we've been using opportunities to amplify and leverage our messages. We work with DuPage mayors and managers on a weekly basis to coordinate social media messaging and complement that messaging, encouraging the sharing of our public education and informational campaigns. Now, as we turn to the budget, let's first look at the parameters by which we developed our budget for this upcoming year. We are working with staff to identify that the current level of effort that we have in response to COVID will likely need to be maintained throughout at least the midpoint of 2021. With that in mind, we based our projections of revenue on trends with conservative estimates and known contract awards. Our, our property tax levy increased for new construction. We again, uh, utilize the CPI escalator for our environmental health services fees. Our investment earnings, again this year, are reflective of the current market. And, and again, we are, are committed to pursuing all revenue opportunities that support our mission, vision, and values. When it comes to expenditures, our budget includes a 3% pool for merit-based increases. We too slid our IMRF rate. We budgeted the expected increase to the employer health insurance, and we are continuously examining service delivery and business processes in search of improved effectiveness and efficiency. When we look at the impact of COVID from a, with a financial lens, we understand that most likely this will result, this new normal will result in new barriers for people, um, will increase for people needing our services. We know that it has created new barriers for persons suffering from behavioral health and substance use disorders. We know that the social isolation and loneliness create additional stress for high-risk households. We know that the result of job loss on individuals and families creates strain, both financial and from a health perspective. We anticipate that the strain on all families will likely increase the need for some of our core services. And we also realize that the health equity issues magnified by, by COVID must be prioritized and continue long after COVID. We also know from a budget perspective that COVID will present additional budget pressures for local, state, and federal governments. The expectation for reduced revenue from traditional sources is part of our long-term planning. The potential costs to federal government of additional stimulus funding, the impact to our local economy, the possibility that, that reduced funding to our community partners and not-for-profit organizations may lead to them making the tough decision to cease operations, will likely all force hard decisions on where to allocate additional funding going forward. So let's look at the nuts and bolts of our budget. Excluding COVID operations, grant applications, and infrastructure funding, our 2021 budget is being brought to you today after the Board of Health approved it earlier this month, balanced at $51,280,406. We are doing this by, um, utilizing some fund balance needed to support the, the, the transition of psychological services, um, that we brought over to the Health Department in 2019. Budget reserve, once again, is being utilized to set aside, um, funds in a contingency basis. This year, due to the uncertainty of COVID and the likely need, um, for, uh, grant applications, particularly to public health entities for things like vaccination and continued mitigation efforts, we've increased from the typical $3 million to $50 million. We will continue to utilize infrastructure funds for capital procurements and strategic initiatives. And bottom line, our, our budget, year-over-year, increased $1.3 million or slightly over 2.5%. This is the fully loaded, um, budget, line by line, or, or category by category. You will see that the, the 50 million of grant applications is listed as a category 1.8 under revenue. And then the, the grant applications from a expense perspective is reflected in 2.8. The next slide, however, backs out and excludes COVID operations and grant applications. And this is where you see the year-over-year, very slight increase. You will also see under intergovernmental that we have, we're anticipating and have contracts in place for a 7.4% increase in our grant awards. And this is largely due to much of the good work that's being done through the Health Department in issues not associated with COVID. As we look to the future, we understand that there's a high degree of uncertainty on the horizon, primarily as a result of the complex domino effect of COVID. Experts suggest a mental health, substance use crisis will likely follow COVID for years to come. We understand and anticipate that state and local governments, governments are experiencing and will continue to experience record deficits. We anticipate that financial impact on our not-for-profits will result in a reduction of community services at the same time that those services are needed by more people. We know that there will be a strain for families experiencing income insufficiency. And finally, we have identified health equity issues that will continue and are exacerbated under COVID-19. And we, as an organization, pledge to continue to address those health disparities as they will be more, as critical as ever before. So thank you for your time, and if time allows.
Okay, certainly. Well, thank you, Karen. Thank you for your good work. Questions? Questions? We have Mr. Grant Ekoff there in the back of the room.
Thank you for the presentation. Thank you for all the hard work that you and your staff have been doing for weeks. And, um, I just had a couple of questions. When this all started, it seemed like the focus was on flattening the curve and trying to make sure we had enough PPC and beds to take care of people. It seems like we've crossed that threshold. And now it seems like we're focused on the number 8% and 6.5%. And I'm trying to figure out what is the, why are those magic numbers?
Okay. So Chris, if you could pull up the dashboard, the cases per day. And you'll see that we're once again in the, in the season of needing to flatten the curve. So when we talked about, if I can get this to work, when we talked about flattening the curve initially, we were in that, that timeframe. And you see the results of our efforts. We were successful. However, as people became more complacent and stopped doing the kinds of things that we need to be doing, you'll now see that the most recent data indicates that we have dwarfed our, our earlier surge. So is there something magical, magical about 6.5 or 8? No, other than to indicate that when we're up to 8% of the cases within the community, up to 8% positivity, um, of cases within the community, we know that there is, uh, there is unrestrained, um, spread within, within our community.
You said we're trying to flatten the curve again. Are, are we better prepared today than we were back in March? Because we've had six months to produce all the PPE and put more beds in and do all that?
Yeah, so, uh, in one respect, I believe we are much more prepared because now we know what works, right? We know that masking works. We know that universal masking helps even more. We know that keeping physical distance and not gathering in large groups helps. We know that washing our hands helps. But what we're seeing is, and what we anticipated seeing, and unfortunately, it's coming true, is that our beds in the hospitals are beginning to fill again. Because this virus impacts a certain percentage of the population with a much more acute and severe form, and that requires that. So yes, our hospitals have the capacity. They're much better in how to treat them. But I will tell you that increasingly, I'm hearing hospital leaders talk about the nearly PTSD-esque reaction that their staff are experiencing as they begin to expand their COVID units again. It's like, no, we can't be here again. So from a PPE perspective, we also are, are in better shape. So this time around, it is not a capacity issue. It's not a hard, um, tangible, as much of a hard tangible issue as it was in the, in the past. However, where we're seeing challenges is that people are tired of the restrictions that this virus is inflicting and, and requiring of us. They're like, well, if I'm, if I'm 20, 30, 40, what do I have to worry about? And in fact, it takes, uh, it takes a few iterations or, or evolution of the virus to get to somebody who, who ultimately will have severe illness.
That was sort of my next question. I'm gonna try not to take every, up everybody's time, but I'm glad that when you were talking about shutting down the restaurants and considering what the schools should do, that you take into a number of consideration, a number of factors from mental health, financial health, all the other factors that are considered. But one, and maybe I've missed it, but is there a breakdown somewhere in the information we've received about what age group of people are actually dying from this? I mean, because I constantly hear that, you know, young kids, very, very small percentage of it. And it seems like if there was some perspective, you know, District 200, they had kids going by my house today on their way to by my house today on their way to school.
Right.
And if parents could see that the kids, the children that their kids' age really are, you know, have very low risk, that would make them feel better and be more supportive of it, which would increase support of it at the school board level.
Right, right. Yes. And so we do have, we have been tracking the the acuity and the severity indices. And that's on the right side of our graph.
So is that DuPage County?
This is DuPage County. One is 20 to 29, eight is 30 to 39.
It just seems like it would help to get that out to parents, number one, and maybe to teachers, number two, because it's my understanding, most teachers are 50 and below.
Absolutely, absolutely. Now, I would like to say that death is a fairly severe outcome to be measuring all of our efforts. And the fact that not many people are dying at at below the age of 80 may not be the only criteria, right, that we want to that we want to be looking at. So we also look at hospitalizations. And we see that even even with lagging indicators, we see that hospitalizations on a daily basis are going up. And additionally, the longer our experience with this virus, and again, it feels like we've been at this forever, but we are still very much in the infancy in understanding what this virus does. But the evidence shows that younger populations tend to be those long haulers. So it's not like I'm acute enough to go into the hospital, but at the same time, I'm disabled enough that I can't do what I used to be doing. And so and so it is all of these elements that we need to consider as we move forward.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Ekoff. Any further questions from folks I see? We have a member, Ozog. There she is. Would you like to ask a question, Member Ozog?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for this presentation. It's been very educational. What at the moment are the plans for the county fair testing in terms of how long it's going to stay open, increasing numbers of tests? I know you mentioned 600 tested days is your maximum now. But how about how long are we, what are you thinking right now?
So our original plans were that we would be able to close the site when the weather got nasty. And that, of course, hasn't worked out so well. We we are seeing record numbers of people wanting to be tested now. And so with the assistance of County Board Office staff support, as well as with our CARES Act dollars and the investment by the State of Illinois to provide us with the test kits and the laboratory work, we are going to be remaining open until at least the end of the calendar year. We will need to adjust, though, because if you've been there, we have the big tent at the bottom of the hill, not exactly made for ice and snowy conditions. So we are moving our operations. And I should say, the other key partner, and this is one of those to us, is Jim McGuire in the fairgrounds. They've been extremely supportive in making this happen. So we will have one of the buildings that we're able to drive into.
Okay.
The impact will be that we'll no longer be able to see 600 people, though, a day. That that will have a dampening impact on the number of people that we are seeing. At the same time, more and more resources are available throughout the county. So we're working to to explore and really make sure that people know where to go for a test.
Karen, thank you so much and your staff for your hard work these past months. Really can't thank you enough. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Sure. Further questions? Member Renahan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Karen, we can't thank you enough. What can I say, right? I would like to ask you a question. We heard recently this week, Illinois is going to start sharing data on COVID outbreaks from schools. Is that going to become part of the your online Health Department information?
We have not had the opportunity to see that information or understand fully what that information will entail. It's quite possible that if we if we do find it valuable and something that we want to promote, we absolutely will work with the amazing GIS team here at the county, who has really worked to support our efforts.
Thank you.
Further questions? Did I see Member Chaplin? No?
Yes.
Followed by Member Pachowski.
Guys, I think on my Internet's having some trouble. Can hear me, Karen. Thank you for the presentation. Necessary. And, you know, as we see the governor's orders come out and we see some businesses not complying, what steps can the Health Department take in that aspect?
So our resources are fairly limited. As you recall, we have over 4,000 food establishments. And so what we would like very much to be able to do is, rather than rather than diluting or inequitably targeting businesses, what we would like to do is use the data to really define what and where our next step should be. So as we identify that there are outbreaks in establishments, and then we find out that those establishments have not been abiding by the governor's orders, or in in some cases, any of the any of the prevention activities, then really focus our efforts on those businesses. Not that we don't want 100% compliance. We absolutely do. And if we if we increase, as we increase compliance, we will see it's it's not it's not complex. The more compliant we are, the case rates will come down. That I will guarantee. And so if we can get more and more businesses to do that. But unfortunately, I get every day, three, four, five, and that's to my personal email account, complaints about businesses who are just very much flaunting the the prevention strategies that that we know are effective.
Further questions? Member Pachowski.
Thank you, Karen. You had 150 deaths for people over 70 and 71 over 60. How many of those people were in nursing facilities? Is that still a big concern? Because that was the hotspot when this first hit. Do we know of those two categories, what percent were that were at nursing facilities?
So I don't have that information at the tip of my finger. What we have seen, however, and Dr. Chug, if you would like to comment, is that more of our deaths are happening to people who were in the community prior to needing acute hospital care.
Yes, good morning, everyone. And yes, thank you for the question. And we are so, and Chris, if you're able to pull up the dashboard, the lower section, please, we do have a couple of pie charts that show the percent of cases that are linked to long-term care facilities versus deaths. And it's almost an inverse relationship here. Thank you. So yeah, we have less than 10% of our cases as a county are associated with a long-term care facility. But sadly, just over 70% of our deaths occur in persons associated with a long-term care facility, the vast majority of those being in residence, our elderly vulnerable residents. And what we're seeing, so this was, you're right, this was very much representative of our first wave in the spring and into the summer. Now, long-term care facilities have received a lot, now they were, you know, strapped and under-resourced for years. And so there has, after they, you know, experienced significant shortages in PPE that likely contributed to ongoing transmission and risk. Now that PPE levels are better and infection prevention practices or and protocols have been implemented, and so we know a lot more, not only about infection prevention, but also clinical assessment and management. We know to initiate, not only to initiate, but to maintain pulse ox, pulse oximetry monitoring is part of vital signs, even if someone is asymptomatic, and then to bump that up to once or twice, to even twice a shift, if and when symptoms develop, if they're not in the hospital. So there's much closer monitoring of individuals in those settings, as well as infection prevention measures. We also know that there's been a cost associated with that, meaning a social and emotional cost, because it's been very isolating, literally, to residents of long-term care facilities because there have been visitor restrictions. And even now, for those who are who have moved beyond their outbreak, they haven't been able to, I mean, if they have, it's been one visitor at a time, maybe outside under strict protocols. So so those have all been implemented. And so we've thankfully seen a significant reduction in disease transmission in those settings. What we are seeing, as Karen was alluding to now, is not only a younger population being hospitalized, but and this is also, in some ways, that we don't want anyone to be hospitalized. Of course, that's why we need to reduce our overall community transmission and activity. But those who are being hospitalized are generally coming from home and then being discharged back home. The duration of stay is not as long, and there there are still ICU stays and persons requiring ventilators, but not to the same degree as earlier. But as our overall hospitalizations grow, then that number will increase, even our even if our percent of ICU admissions are low. So it's still very much a concern. And and we're still just on the cusp of, you know, entering into flu season. So, you know, as they've been talking about the twinemic of COVID-19 with influenza. So that's what we're really bracing ourselves for, where influenza does impact our long-term care facility community every every season. So even in our elderly population, though, we are seeing an increase, just anecdotally from our, what we're seeing from our surveillance data is that even in our elderly population, it's individuals who are increasingly coming from home, not necessarily from a facility. So I hope that helps explain a little bit of the transition that we've seen in our populations most severely impacted.
Are we doing anything because of the up and coming flu season? Or is there something that we are going to be more proactive on? Or is this what you've already discussed is what we'll be doing?
Oh, definitely. And I'll defer back to Karen. But yeah, flu vaccination, influenza vaccination has, we've been very heavily promoting. And yes, Karen?
Sure. And that's that's one of the reasons that we appreciate so much the the investment and the strategy that came from the the County Board funding to extend the opportunity for individuals who don't have health insurance right now to avail themselves of a flu vaccine. Again, the same things that will help with reducing transmission of COVID will also help reduce the transmission of flu. However, in addition, we have the flu vaccination.
Further discussion, further questions? Member Jim Zay.
Chairman, thank you, Karen. We had joked earlier, you know, we saw a bunch of the commercials on that god-awful Bears game last night. But we've been hearing them on the radio. We've been seeing them on cable. I mean, the job that you guys are doing are great. I just, again, DuPage is a leader because I don't see anything coming out of Cook County. I don't see anything coming out of the city of Chicago. I just see mostly in hearing things on the radio is DuPage taking the lead on this. So so thank you for that. And again, I know it's it's tough times and everybody's working hard on this. You know, the flu thing, I'm getting a flu shot first time ever. I think that you guys are promoting that well. And I think it's just continue to do what you're doing. You guys are doing a great job. Obviously, people are concerned. We had talked, you know, with things going on, us having this spike, the holidays are traditionally just a horrible time, you know, for for people normally. You know, we have a lot of depression and suicide and all that. And I just, I'm worried that this year, it's going to be even more compounded because what's going on. And I know you addressed it in it. So I'm glad to see that you guys are going to be taking a look at that and making sure that people are out there, you know, know there's a place to turn to for help.
Absolutely, absolutely. Yes, thank you.
Very good. Further discussion, questions? Anyone? Anyone? Okay, Karen, that was outstanding. Thank you very, very much. I move on to Chairman's remarks. Have a few remarks to share with you, please. Today, today, you have the opportunity to provide some relief to restaurants and bars impacted by the governor's mitigation measures put into place last week. Finance Committee Chairman Bob Larson is to be commended for acting swiftly to provide this much-needed support to these particular small business owners who desperately, desperately need the help. We want to do all we can to support each other and our businesses during this very, very difficult time. I urge the Board to approve this resolution today so we can begin the application process and get this money into the hands of our restaurant and bar owners as soon as possible. Thanks also to Choose DuPage for administering our Reinvest DuPage program, including the batch of grants on the agenda this morning. DuPage County has approved some $15 million in grants to 1,256 small businesses. I want to commend Choose DuPage, the staff, the folks that have really turned this around, a thorough review and and examination, but also very efficient work in turning around and getting this money into the hands of small businesses. I don't know that there is another economic development arm in another county that has done it as well as we have. Thank you very much, Greg Betaloff. Finally, in lieu of our annual traditional Veterans Day ceremony, DuPage County this year will provide a virtual gathering, a gathering place to celebrate veterans. The county's information technology and geographic information system teams created an interactive Veterans Day portal, which can be found at dupageco.org/veteran. You may recall, this original idea came from IT Department employee Dave Roberts around Memorial Day. We've brought it to life again for Veterans Day. The site allows residents to create their own honor post, highlighting their loved one or friend, along with a photo and a written tribute. The website also features quotes, poems, and videos for tribute, educational and historical information surrounding the Veterans Day holiday. Thanks to Dave, also Tom Ricker from our GIS department, Don Carlson, Steve Fixler, Tech Committee Chairman Greg Hart, who supported this very special and important project from the very, very beginning. That Veterans Day portal, again, is dupageco.org/veteran. So with that, we will move into the order of business entitled Public Comment. Public Comment. I am advised that there is no public comment here in person. However, Mr. McCarthy, our trusted, oh, here we have somebody, a late-breaking, Mark Daniel is here. Oh, he left. Okay. So he files a document here, seeking to provide testimony, but we'll enter this into the record. He said he sent an email, and so we will make sure that that is entered into the record. Thank you very much, Mr. Deputy Clerk. So with that, we will pivot to Mr. McCarthy pursuant to the governor's order. We can, we can allow participation in public comment via electronic messaging. So with that, please proceed, Mr. McCarthy.
First comment is from Jack Morrissey. It's regarding sad behavior. Says, "As elected officials, the public looks up to you, the members of the Board, to display behavior and conduct worthy of your office, and yes, to have the competence to make decisions on our behalf. We expect this behavior from all of our elected leaders, including the President. Last week, a member of this County Board issued a Facebook post that stated the chairman is, quote, 'sounding more like Donald Trump every day, stroking fears and causing division.' The same member then attached a screenshot containing an image of the chairman writing something like, 'The left loves violence and destruction.' However, the author of this Facebook post, Board Member Liz Chaplin of Downers Grove, either failed to include or failed to understand a very important detail. The screenshot she attributed to the chairman was not the chairman. It was from the random man from Massachusetts. Member Chaplin, how are we supposed to have faith in decisions you make as an elected leader if you cannot even distinguish the difference between two people on Facebook? Sad in so many ways. Not a day goes by when I'm not ashamed of the man in the White House and the tactics he uses. However, it appears that the only one using Trump-like tactics on the DuPage County Board is Member Chaplin, who apparently likes to spread fake news via her Facebook page, or she needs to do a little more homework before posting nonsense on Facebook. Either way, it's not a good representation of competent elected leadership. Sad." That concludes his comment. Next comments from Daniela Acosta. It's regarding incompetence. States, "How many County Board members does it take to spread fake news? Apparently only one. Every four years, County Board Member Liz Chaplin has prided herself on bringing transparency to the County Board. I wish she would apply that skill set to bring some transparency to her own Facebook page. Liz Chaplin, the people of DuPage County, can understand the difference between the chairman of the County Board and a random man who happens to be named Dan Cronin, who lives thousands of miles away." happens to be named Dan Cronin, who lives thousands of miles away in Massachusetts. Why can't you? With the bar set this low, maybe my 12-year-old should run for county board." Next comments from James Coslow, it's regarding, "Please stop the nonsense," states, "It is shameful, it is a shameful state of affairs when the reason you know you're county board member is for a negative reason. I recently read Elmhurst Patch article where Liz Chaplin was complaining about the chairman. It seems to be a common occurrence. She apparently shared a fake screenshot attributing words to the chairman that were spoken by a man who lives in Massachusetts. I don't know if Chaplin was intentionally trying to deceive the public into believing that the fictitious screenshot was real, or if she didn't know it wasn't real herself, but does it really matter? Either way, it is embarrassing for someone who holds elected office to either A, stoop to this level, or B, not know the difference between two different people. How is she supposed to negotiate contracts effectively for the taxpayer if she's so easily deceived by the presence of two people with the same name? Can 2020 be over yet, please?" That concludes all the public comment I have.
Okay, that concludes public comment. Uh, we move on to the order of business entitled Consent. Consent. I'll entertain a motion. There's a motion from Mr. Larson, seconded by Member Rutledge. Uh, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Larson.
Aye.
Noonan.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pacowski.
Aye.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Selman.
Aye.
Selman.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
DeSani.
Aye.
Eckoff.
Aye.
Elliott.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Healy.
Aye.
Raduski.
Aye.
Okay. Uh, the consent items are adopted. Onto the Order of County Board. Member Jim
Zay. I, Mr. Healy is seeking recognition.
Jim Healy, Mr. Beach.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Mr. Healy seeking recognition on, on the Order of County Board.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move for approval of CBR 60920, an appointment of Wilfred Perrault to the Glenbard Fire Protection District.
There's been a motion and a second. Um, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Healy.
Aye.
Raduski.
Aye.
Larson.
Aye.
Noonan.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pacowski.
Aye.
Pacowski.
Aye.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Selman.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
DeSani.
Aye.
Eckoff.
Aye.
Elliott.
Aye.
And Hart.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Mr. Healy?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I move to approve, uh, move to combine items B, C, and D.
Uh, I don't think we can do that. Can we do that, Mr. Chair?
Can I?
What?
Uh, it's, you should take the appointments separately because they're for separate individuals.
Move for approval of CBR 61020, appointment of Karen Charvet to DuPage County Airport Authority.
And a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Healy.
Aye.
Raduski.
Aye.
Larson.
Aye.
Noonan.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pacowski.
Aye.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Selman.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
DeSani.
Aye.
Eckoff.
Aye.
Elliott.
Aye.
And Hart.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Mr. Healy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move for approval of CBR 61120, appointment of Juan Chavez to the DuPage Airport Authority.
And a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Healy.
Aye.
Raduski.
Aye.
Larson.
Aye.
Noonan.
Aye.
Ozog.
No.
Is that a no?
No, thank you.
Pacowski.
Aye.
Renahan.
No.
Rutledge.
No.
Selman.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
No.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
No.
DeSani.
Aye.
Eckoff.
Aye.
Elliott.
Aye.
And Hart.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Mr. Healy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move for approval of CBR 6120, appointment of Michael Ladoan to the DuPage Airport Authority.
And a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Healy.
Aye.
Raduski.
Aye.
Larson.
Aye.
Noonan.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pacowski.
Aye.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Selman.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
DeSani.
Aye.
Eckoff.
Aye.
Elliott.
Aye.
And Hart.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Healy. A fine report. And Mr. Zay's stead. We move on to the Order of Finance, member, Mr. Bob Larson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I first move to combine agenda items A through G, which are various acceptance appropriations and corrections and scrivenor's errors.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second to combine these items. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Larson.
Aye.
Noonan.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pacowski.
Aye.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Selman.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
DeSani.
Aye.
Eckoff.
Aye.
Elliott.
Aye.
And Hart.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Healy. A fine report. And Mr. Zay's stead. We move on to the Order of Finance, member, Mr. Bob Larson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I first move to combine agenda items A through G, which are various acceptance appropriations and corrections and scrivenor's errors.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second to combine these items. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Larson.
Aye.
Noonan.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pacowski.
Aye.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Selman.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
DeSani.
Aye.
Eckoff.
Aye.
Elliott.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Healy.
Aye.
And Raduski.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Mr. Larson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would then move approval of FIR 60720, sorry, recommendation of approval of payment to the city of West Chicago for supplemental COVID reimbursement in the amount of $143,200.
And a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Larson.
Aye.
Noonan.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pacowski.
Aye.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Selman.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
DeSani.
Aye.
Eckoff.
Aye.
Elliott.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Healy.
Aye.
And Raduski.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Mr. Larson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would then move approval of FIR 59120, which is the renewal of our group insurance programs pursuant to presentation of the board received at the last Finance Committee meeting.
And a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Larson.
Aye.
Noonan.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pacowski.
Aye.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Selman.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
DeSani.
Aye.
Eckoff.
Aye.
Elliott.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Healy.
Aye.
And Raduski.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Mr. Larson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would then move approval of FIR 60720, sorry, recommendation of approval of payment to the city of West Chicago for a supplemental COVID reimbursement in the amount of $143,200.
And a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Larson.
Aye.
Noonan.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pacowski.
Aye.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Selman.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
DeSani.
Aye.
Eckoff.
Aye.
Elliott.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Healy.
Aye.
And Raduski.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Mr. Larson?
Thank you. You can certainly see why we tried to combine these. I would then move approval-
Well, they're combined. Now you have to describe them, so we can, right.
Right, yes. Uh, now I move approval of FIR 59720, allocation of $2 million from the DuPage Coronavirus Relief Fund to the CRF Housing Assistance Program. FIR 59620, agreement between the county of DuPage and the Housing Assistance Program for reimbursement of eligible COVID expenses. FIR 61320, approval of issuance of payments to small businesses under the Small Business Relief Grant Fund Program in the amount of $892,774. FIR 60820, placing names on payroll. FIR 58720, budget transfers to various companies and accounting units. And FIP 28920, approval of contract purchase order to CorVel for third-party administrator services for contract not to exceed $283,056.
Okay, thank you. There's been a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Larson.
Aye.
Noonan.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pacowski.
Aye.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Selman.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
DeSani.
Aye.
Eckoff.
Aye.
Elliott.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Healy.
Aye.
And Raduski.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Mr. Larson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would then move approval of FIR 61420, approval of a second amendment to agreement with Choose DuPage to administer the DuPage County COVID-19 Small Business Relief Fund.
And a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Larson.
Aye.
Noonan.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pacowski.
Aye.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Selman.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Covert.
Selman.
Aye.
Tornatori. Zay. Chaplin.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
Diciani.
Aye.
Eckhoff. Elliott.
Aye.
Hart. Healy. And Krajewski.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk, Mr. Larson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And finally, I would move approval of FIR 9120, approval of amendment to the DuPage County Procurement Ordinance Funding Thresholds and the addition of a new section to the ordinance for credit accounts as amended in Finance. And I have had distributed by email and by hand copies to this board, the proposed amendment, to make sure that we're all in agreement on it. It is a removal of the existing 4-101-2 of the ordinance and replacing it with the following minimum requirements for purchases of goods and services in the amount of $1,000 or greater and less than $15,000. The department shall obtain quotations slash proposals, open parentheses, these may be in written form, fax, or email, close paren, from at least three vendors where applicable. The payment of these purchases will be made on payment voucher forms presented to the Finance Department without purchasing division approval and processing. Documentation for these purchases shall be retained by each department. With that proposed amendment, Mr. Chairman, which was already approved at Finance, I would move approval of the ordinance.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Larson.
Aye.
Noonan.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski.
Aye.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge. Selman.
Aye.
Tornatori. Zay. Chaplin.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
Diciani.
Aye.
Eckhoff. Elliott.
Aye.
Hart. Healy. And Krajewski.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Thank you, Mr. Larson. A fine report. On to the Order of Animal Services, Mr. Brian Krajewski.
I move on ASO 0081-20, which is an ordinance amending Chapter 26 of the DuPage County Code.
Second.
Then a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Krajewski.
Aye.
Larson. Noonan. Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski.
Aye.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge. Selman.
Aye.
Tornatori. Zay. Chaplin.
Aye.
Covert. Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
Diciani.
Aye.
Eckhoff. Elliott.
Aye.
Hart. And Healy.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Thank you, Mr. Krajewski. Uh, on to the Order of Development, Member Sam Tornatori.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning. I move to approve DCO 79-20, Ordinance C2032 ICWS, to approve a continuation of a conditional use pursuant to ordinance number Z1125A.
Then a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay. Chaplin.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
Diciani.
Aye.
Eckhoff. Elliott.
Aye.
Hart. Healy. Krajewski. Larson. Noonan. Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski.
Aye.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge. And Selman.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. On to the Order of Economic Development, Mr. Tim Elliott.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. By way of a committee update, I want to recognize a couple of our folks for a job really well done. Um, we all on this board are familiar with Worknet DuPage. Um, I consider it probably one of the best sort of kept secrets. I wish it wasn't such a secret, uh, in DuPage County. They do just phenomenal work. Um, this last week, I had an opportunity to speak with a constituent who, uh, without getting into the details of her story, really had her life turned around and opportunities opened to her uh, that she may not have had opened to her, uh, by virtue of really, really good work and solid work, uh, by that team. And so I just want to give, uh, in a public acknowledgement to Brittany Coyne and Maureen Goutash, uh, from Worknet DuPage, uh, for the great work they did with this particular person and, and the work that I know that whole organization is doing with, with lots of others. So thank you to that whole team over there. Um, they're, they're doing a great job. And if our board members could really do their best to make sure that all of our constituents are aware of the services they provide, I think our county would be, um, just, uh, that much of a stronger place to be. Uh, so with that, uh, Mr. Chairman, um, I would like to bring a motion to combine Agenda Items 12A through D.
Second.
Then a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Elliott.
Aye.
Hart. Healy. Krajewski. Larson. Noonan. Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski.
Aye.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge. Selman.
Aye.
Tornatori. Zay. Chaplin.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
Diciani.
Aye.
And Eckhoff.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Mr. Elliott.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I move approval of Items EDP 28520, approval of a contract purchase order to Parents Alliance Employment Project, uh, in an amount not to exceed $88,890. EDP 28620, approval of a contract purchase order to the DuPage Regional Office of Education, uh, for a total not to exceed $232,370. EDP 28720, award of a contract purchase or, uh, order to Parents Alliance Employment Project in an amount not to exceed $220,419. And an amendment to contract issued to World Relief DuPage Aurora, uh, in an amount not to exceed, uh, $252,154.
Then a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Elliott.
Aye.
Hart. Healy. Krajewski. Larson. Noonan. Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski.
Aye.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge. Selman.
Aye.
Tornatori. Zay. Chaplin.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
Diciani.
Aye.
And Eckhoff.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Clerk. Thank you, Mr. Elliott. A fine report. On to the Order of Health and Human Services, Member Sam Tornatori.
Good morning again, Mr. Chairman. I move to combine Items 13A through D. These are modifications and approvals of various contracts.
Second.
Then a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay. Chaplin.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
Diciani.
Aye.
Eckhoff. Elliott.
Aye.
Hart. Healy. Krajewski. Larson. Noonan. Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski.
Aye.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge. And Selman.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Mr. Tornatori.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move, uh, to approve, uh, HHSR 57120, Resolution to Approve Initiates of Payments by DuPage County to Energy Assistance Providers through LIHEAT. Move to approve HHSR 572-20, a resolution recommending approval of first modification to Emergency Solutions Grand COVID Response Agreement with DuPage Peds. Move to approve HHSR 573-20, a resolution recommending approval of a substantial Amendment 4 to the 2019 Action Plan Element of the 2015-19 DuPage County Consolidated Plan. Move to approve HHSR 574-20, a resolution recommending approval of a Community Development Black Brand Agreement with Midwest Shelter for Homeless Veterans.
Then a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay. Chaplin.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
Diciani.
Aye.
Eckhoff. Elliott.
Aye.
Hart. Healy. Krajewski. Larson. Noonan. Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski.
Aye.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge. And Selman.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Mr. Tornatori.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move to combine Items E through K. These are recommendations to approve modifications to home investment partnership agreements.
Second, Desart.
There's been a motion and a second to combine Items E through K. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay. Chaplin.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
Diciani.
Aye.
Eckhoff. Elliott.
Aye.
Hart. Healy. Krajewski. Larson. Noonan. Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski.
Aye.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge. And Selman.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Mr. Tornatori.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move to approve HHSR 57520, a recommendation to approve a second modification to a home investment partnership agreement with DuPage Peds. And move to approve HHSR 576-20, a resolution, resolution recommending approval of a first modification to a home improvement partnership agreement with DuPage Peds. Move to approve HHR 577-20, a recommendation to approve a second modification for a home investment partnership agreement with Catholic Charities. Move to approve HHSR 578-20, a recommendation to approve a first modification to a home improvement partnership, once again with Catholic Charities. Move to approve HHSR 579-20, a recommendation for approval of a first modification to a home investment partnership agreement with NEH1. Move to approve HHSR 580-20, a resolution recommending approval of a first modification to a home investment partnership agreement with NEH2. And move to approve HHSR 581-20, a resolution recommending approval of a first modification to a home improvement partnership agreement with Warrenville Horizon Limited Partnership.
There's a second? There's a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay. Chaplin.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
Diciani.
Aye.
Eckhoff. Elliott.
Aye.
Hart. Healy. Krajewski. Larson. Noonan. Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski.
Aye.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge. And Selman.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Mr. Tornatori.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move to combine Items L, M, and N. These are change orders to contracts for the DuPage Care Center and county properties.
There's been a motion and a second to combine these three items. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay. Chaplin.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
Diciani.
Aye.
Eckhoff. Elliott.
Aye.
Hart. Healy. Krajewski. Larson. Noonan. Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski.
Aye.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge. And Selman.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Mr. Tornatori.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move to approve HHSR 582-20. This is a resolution to DuPage County Care Center rate increase to increase the rate patient per day charges last fixed by Resolution HHSR 357-19. Move to approve HHSP 276-20, a recommendation for approval of a contract purchase order to Easy Way Inc. for smart stands and lifts. And I move to approve a change order, HHSP 247A-20, amendment to Resolution HHP 247-20 issued to Healthy Air Heating and Air Inc.
Then a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay. Chaplin.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
Diciani.
Aye.
Eckhoff. Elliott.
Aye.
Hart. Healy. Krajewski. Larson. Noonan. Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski.
Aye.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge. Selman.
Aye.
Zay.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Thank you, Mr. Tornatori.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
On to the Order of Judicial Public Safety, Mr. Grant. Eckhoff.
Charge of JPS Committee regarding the Agenda Items 14B and G.
Then a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Eckhoff.
Aye.
Elliott.
Aye.
Hart. Healy. Krajewski. Larson. Noonan. Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski.
Aye.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge. Selman.
Aye.
Tornatori. Zay. Chaplin.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
And Diciani.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Clerk. Member Eckhoff.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would move to combine and approve Agenda Items JPS 14A, B, C, D, E, F, and G, which are creation of contracts or modification of contracts.
There's a motion to combine these items. There's been a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Eckhoff.
Aye.
Elliott.
Aye.
Hart. Healy. Krajewski. Larson. Noonan. Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski.
Aye.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge. Selman.
Aye.
Tornatori. Zay. Chaplin.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
And Diciani.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. The items are combined. Please proceed, Mr. Eckhoff.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move approval of JPS 277-20, recommendation for approval of a renewal contract to Concisus Corp. for the Circuit Clerk's Office. JPS 278-20, recommendation for approval of contract purchase order to Allied Universal Technology for our past code systems. JPS 279-20, recommendation for approval of contract purchase order to Dummies Unlimited for the Sheriff's Office Training. JPS 280-20, recommendation for approval of contract purchase order to Business IT Source for computer equipment for the Clerk's Office, Circuit Clerk's Office. JPS 281-20, recommendation for approval of contract purchase order to Faro Technologies for a upgraded 3D laser scanner for the Coroner's Office. JPS, uh, 341-19A to Celico Partnership Verizon for modification of that contract for probation. And, uh, JPS 28-20, recommendation for approval of, uh, JPS 10-20, change order for contracts that purchase order Allied Universal Security Services for the Office of Homeland and Security Management.
Then a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Eckhoff.
Aye.
Elliott.
Aye.
Hart. Healy. Krajewski. Larson. Noonan. Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski.
Aye.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge. Selman.
Aye.
Tornatori. Zay. Chaplin.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
And Diciani. What was that?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Eckhoff. A very fine report. On to the Order of Public Works, Member Jim Healy.
I move for approval of PWR 51120, which is a second amendment to a lease as amended in Finance Committee-
I'm sorry, we can't hear.
Here.
Your microphone may not be activated.
There it is. Sorry, Mr. Chairman. I move for approval of PWR 51120, second amendment to the lease as amended in Finance Committee with the DuPage County Fair Association.
Then a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Healy.
Aye.
Krajewski. Larson. Noonan. Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski.
Aye.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge. Selman.
Aye.
Tornatori. Zay. Chaplin.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
Diciani.
Aye.
Diciani.
Aye.
Eckhoff. Elliott. Elliott.
I'm sorry, aye.
And Hart.
Okay, the resolution is adopted. Member Healy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move to combine Items, uh, 15B through F.
There's a motion and a second to combine Items B, C-
Excuse me, can we pull, um, E, please?
I'll just do them one by one, Mr. Chairman.
Or F, I'm sorry. No, just pull F, please.
F?
Just go-
Yes, F, I'm sorry.
If we just do one at a time.
Pull F, okay. Move to combine B, C, D, and E.
Then a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Healy.
Aye.
Krajewski. Larson. Noonan. Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski.
Aye.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge. Selman.
Aye.
Tornatori. Zay. Chaplin.
Aye.
Covert. Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
Diciani.
Aye.
Eckhoff. Elliot.
Aye.
And Hart.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I move for approval of FMR 58420, an agreement with the State of Illinois on behalf of the Department of Veterans Affairs for lease of space, FMP 28220, an agreement with the Illinois Earthwise Environmental, Inc. for professional water treatment consulting and management services, FMP 28320, contract to Johnson Controls to furnish and deliver specified Johnson Control parts, and PWP 28420, a contracted with, a contract with Consolidated Machine for the purchase of a sanitizer for the Public Works Laboratory.
An emotion and a second, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Healy.
Aye.
Krajewski. Larson. Noonan. Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski.
Aye.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge. Selman.
Aye.
Tornatori. Zay. Chaplin.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
Diciani.
Aye.
Eckhoff. Elliot.
Aye.
And Hart.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I move for approval of FMCO 2620, amendment to the resolution issued to White Construction Services.
Second.
Provide professional construction management services for Carzak-funded campus improvements in response to the COVID-19 pandemic.
An emotion and a second, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Healy.
Aye.
Krajewski. Larson. Noonan. Ozog.
No.
Pachowski.
Aye.
Renahan.
No.
Rutledge. Selman.
Aye.
Tornatori. Zay. Chaplin.
No.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Zay.
Diciani.
Aye.
Eckhoff. Elliot.
No.
And Hart.
Okay, resolution is adopted. Thank you, Mr. Healy, on to the order of business entitled Technology, Member Greg Hart.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, by way of committee update, I just first want to thank you for mentioning our Veterans Day portal in your chairman's remarks, I also want to thank Don Carlson, Dave Roberts, and Tom Ricker for all their hard work in honoring those who have served our country, so thank you for them, having said that, I'll move on to item A, I'll move on TEP 255-20, recommendation for the approval of a contract purchase order to Infor, Inc.
An emotion and a second, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Hart.
Aye.
Healy. Krajewski. Larson. Noonan. Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski.
Aye.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge. Selman.
Aye.
Tornatori. Zay. Chaplin.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
Diciani.
Aye.
Eckhoff. And Elliot.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Clerk, Mr. Hart.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I move on TEP 288-20, recommendation for the approval of a contract purchase order to BMC Software.
We can't do that. An emotion and a second, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Hart.
Aye.
Healy. Krajewski. Larson.
Aye.
Noonan. Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski.
Aye.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge. Selman.
Aye.
Tornatori. Zay. Chaplin.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
Diciani.
Aye.
Eckhoff. And Elliot.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Clerk, thank you, Mr. Hart, a very fine report, on to the order of transportation, Member Don Pachowski.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve resolution DTR 56920, authorizing a grant application to Illinois Department of Transportation for preliminary Phase 1 engineering for improvements along the East Branch of the DuPage River Trail.
Second, Elliot. An emotion and a second by Member Elliot, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Pachowski.
Mr. Chairman, may I be heard on this?
Let me recognize Mr. Elliot.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I just want to say a word or two about this, I think many of you are familiar with this trail project, it's one that was originally designed about 20 years ago by DuPage County, and sort of sat on the sidelines for many years because there just always seemed to be other priorities, but I just want to recognize the number of people who've worked very hard to make this trail a reality, this is a true partnership that we're moving forward within this, Chris Snyder and Sid Kenyon and his team at, at the Transportation Department, the Forest Preserve, Tim Whalen and the group over there, the Village of Glendale, the Village of Lombard, the Park Districts, the Butterfield Park District, are all working together to make this a reality, but I also want to give a special acknowledgement to three of our residents in District Four who have sort of picked this project up and have done a great job at making people aware of it and have prodding the elected officials, myself included, to make that happen, and that's Libby Ahern, Ginger Wheeler, and Steve Johnson, who are heading the Friends of the East Branch of the DuPage River Trail, they're a great example of when citizens are really involved and push hard and advocate, they can make things happen, so I just want to give them an acknowledgement at this meeting.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Elliot, I remember their advocacy so well that when I was riding my bike one morning on the prairie path, they flagged me down and stopped me, and we talked about the issue right there, as you come over down the hill near that treatment facility, as you approach Hill Avenue, just, just east of Hill Avenue, so right, the pathway, I think the north-south pathway for that bike trail is approximately in that location, but in any event, what zealous advocates, what effective advocates, I was so impressed, I remember it, I was a little sweaty that day, but we took some pictures, and it was very nice, so thank you for your good work, I know this wouldn't have happened without you, so with that, we have a motion and a second, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Pachowski.
Aye.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge. Selman.
Aye.
Tornatori. Zay. Chaplin. Chaplin. Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
Diciani.
Aye.
Eckhoff. Elliot.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Healy. Healy. Krajewski. Larson. Noonan. Ozog.
Aye.
And Chaplin.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Clerk, Mr. Pachowski.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, move to approve DTP 27420, a contract to Fastenal Company to provide maintenance, repair, and operating supplies as needed for a contract not to exceed $75,000.
An emotion and a second, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Pachowski.
Aye.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge. Selman.
Aye.
Tornatori. Zay. Chaplin.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
Diciani.
Aye, Diciani's a nine, sorry.
Elliot.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Healy. Krajewski. Larson. Noonan. And Ozog.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk, Mr. Pachowski.
Move to approve DTP 27520, a contract to Parsons Transportation Group, Inc. for professional central signals network support services upon request of the Division of Transportation for a contract not to exceed $90,000.
An emotion and a second, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Pachowski.
Aye.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge. Selman.
Aye.
Tornatori. Zay. Chaplin.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
Diciani.
Aye.
Eckhoff. Elliot.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Healy. Krajewski. Larson. Noonan. And Ozog.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk, Mr. Pachowski.
Move to approve DT 077-20, an ordinance for the alteration of a speed limit along Cass Avenue from North Frontage Road to 91st Street from 45 miles to 40 miles per hour.
An emotion and a second, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Pachowski.
Aye.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge. Selman.
Aye.
Tornatori. Zay. Chaplin.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
Diciani.
Aye.
Eckhoff. Elliot.
Aye.
Hart. Healy. Krajewski. Larson. Noonan. And Ozog.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk, Mr. Pachowski.
Move to approve DT 080-20, an ordinance declaring the conveyance of property necessary and convenient for a portion of the Oak Drive adjacent to the Illinois Prairie Path.
An emotion and a second, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Pachowski.
Aye.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge. Selman.
Aye.
Tornatori. Zay. Chaplin.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
Diciani.
Aye.
Eckhoff. Elliot.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Healy. Krajewski. Larson. Noonan. And Ozog.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk, Mr. Pachowski.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, finally move to approve change order DTP 17820, an amendment to a resolution issued to 3M Company to furnish and deliver signed materials, rolled goods as needed for amount not to exceed $22,096.50, remending an amended contract of $57,096.50.
Thank you, there's been a motion and a second, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Pachowski.
Aye.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge. Selman.
Aye.
Tornatori. Zay. Chaplin.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
Diciani.
Aye.
Eckhoff. Elliot.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Healy. Krajewski. Larson. Noonan. And Ozog.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk, thank you, Mr. Pachowski, on to the order of business entitled Discussion, Discussion, Public Act 99-0646, Pension Obligation Projections Required by the Local Government Wage Increase Transparency Act, anyone else, anyone seeking recognition? Anyone, anyone seeing none, hearing none, we move on to the next order of business entitled Old Business, I'd like to recognize Member Sean Noonan, please, to start us off.
Just a reminder to everyone that October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, this month we honor the breast cancer survivors and offer our heartfelt support and prayers to those currently battling this disease, we also remember the precious lives lost to breast cancer and the families forever changed as a result, according to the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, breast cancer is the second most common cancer among women, during Breast Cancer Awareness Month, we display pink ribbons or wear pink clothing to raise awareness, we continue to applaud the efforts of our medical professionals and researchers working to find a cure, thank you.
Thank you very much, anyone else seeking recognition on the order of Old Business? Old Business? Old? Seeing none, hearing, oh, Mr. Diciani, Mr. Diciani, there he is.
I want to thank our restaurants, I know they're under a lot of stress right now, but Francesca's and Armand's have been helpful with pads and many of our homeless providers sending, you know, food on a weekly basis at no charge to these homeless people who we're trying to take care of, they fed the COVID workers at Almers Hospital, almost 175 meals fed, no charge, so we're stepping up, we stepped up for them today big time, which is important, but they've also stepped up in these tough times when they didn't even know if they'd have a future, but they perform what they do best, and they make great, great food, and very philanthropic, and again, I just want to commend them for, for their, their, their service and stepping up for our homeless and for the first responders, thank you.
Thank you, now, anyone else seeking recognition on the order of Old Business? Seeing none, hearing none, we move on to the order entitled New Business, New Business, anyone seeking recognition on the order of New Business? Uh, Member Chaplin.
Thank you, Chairman, I just want to remind everyone that November 14th, DuPage County is going to be hosting our Household Hazardous Waste Collection at the Fairgrounds from 9 to noon, so just get the word out that we'll be doing that, I also want to say that I'm really pleased too today that we passed the lease for the Fairgrounds, you know, Jim McGuire and his team have been so valuable during the COVID, and it really is a great place for community to gather, and I've been over there several times, so when the weather gets nicer, I'd encourage some of the board members to go over there, see everything that they're doing, because they're, they're doing a nice job out there, and last, I want to mention that Member Ozog and I attended the DuPage Road Safety Council Seminar that[1304.01]